I'd like to call to order the June 6 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Chair, please take the roll.
Supervisor of CERNET.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is Cablecast Live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed, captioned, and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, June 10 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff when the chair calls your name. Please come to the podium. Please silence your electronic devices.
Thank you. Could everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a race to the finish.
Call the first item.
Your first matter, you're acting as the in-home supportive services public authority. This is the, you're approving the in-home supportive services public authority fiscal year 2018-19 recommended budget in the amount of $1,292,468.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. I just want to take a brief second to introduce John Kazitsa, who is our interim public authority executive director, and he's going to be presenting the budget this morning.
Thank you. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. I am John Kazitsa, interim executive director for the in-home supportive services public authority. I'm here today to present for your board approval the fiscal year 2018-19 IHSS public authorities recommended budget of $1,292,468. The in-home supportive, the IHSS public authority is mandated to perform several functions. One is working with the labor relations to negotiate wages and benefits with the unions representing IHSS caregivers. The other is to operate a registry referral service that provides screened and qualified caregivers to IHSS recipients who may need a caregiver referral. Provide educational classes for both IHSS caregivers and recipients. Also, the public authority is under an agreement with Department of Child, Family and Adult Services to provide all provider enrollment services for Sacramento County, to include conducting orientations three times a week, which is currently maintaining attendance levels of 60-plus or minus caregivers each day, with an annual attendance pushing just above 8,000 caregivers. It's a slight increase over last year. We also do the Department of Justice background report evaluations for each caregiver, as that's a requirement. Managing caregiver employment forms from the point of receipt all the way through record retention, as well as we have a public counter that's open from 8 to 5, five days a week. Before your board today is the IHSS public authorities recommended budget of $1,292,468. This is providing for continued staffing at the IHSS public authorities current level, continued service agreements with Accent Care of California, which provides urgent response services to recipients, and continued service agreements with RTI Technology, which is supporting our software and database needs. We also have the memorandum of understanding with Department of Child, Family and Adult Services to perform the provider enrollment services. I did want to highlight one point, which is in the board letter, resulting from the change in the accounting practices that was discussed yesterday. This board is, this budget is numerically less than last year's budget by $484,472. If we remove that numerical effect of the change in accounting practices, the public authorities budget went up by 4.2 percent, or $74,534, very slight increase. The 4.2 percent primarily reflects normal increases in salaries and wages. We have some minor adjustments within our budget, which got us down to 4.2 percent. So at this point, I would like to request that your board adopt the fiscal year 2018-19 recommended budget in the amount of $1,292,468, and approve the authorizations to enter into the continuing revenue and service agreements needed to meet the public authority mandates. I would like to thank you for your time and consideration, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for John? Or motion?
So move. Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you for your succinct presentation.
Thank you.
It was three years in the making.
Item number four, authorization to reduce project scope for the Rio Casumnes Correctional Center, Senate Bill 1022 project.
Okay, Jeff, or, okay, I'm not sure, I have it down as Mr. Gasaway is the first speaker, but I don't care.
Yeah, Jennifer's gonna start.
Okay, all right.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, supervisors. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Jennifer Freeworth. I'm with the Sheriff's Department, and I'm the chief over correctional services. This is concerning SB 1022 continuation from the other day. And just in way of a recap of events, in 2013, you, the board, approved the sheriff's department's request to enter into a competitive bidding process for the SB 1022 funding. The guidelines of the award had to include programming for services, programming space, that is, for services, custodial housing, as well as space for medical and mental health treatment and rehabilitation services. The bid process was extremely competitive. There were nine other counties that opted into the bidding process. Sacramento came out fourth overall with only a partial funding at that point until such time that another county ahead of us fell out of the process for one reason or another, and we were funded, or we were awarded the full funding. So let me restate that one of the major components of, for winning this award was the fact that we were going to offer more programming opportunity for the inmates while incarcerated. There was also an assessment that was done of RCCC and the need for the areas in need of improvement in programming. There were nine assessments that came out of that that were most critical, critically identified as those areas that needed improvement. And as part of the SB 1022 project, one of those areas was the kitchen. And the idea of a cook-chill facility there was born. Fast forward to today, through conversations with general services and architectural design that recently came up over the last couple of months, due to the delay in the funding from 2013 to present, there have been construction costs that have risen as a result of a number of reasons that I'm sure Mr. Gasaway will address for you today. We had to come together and make the difficult decision in looking at that, what areas of this project we were ultimately going to have to cut. Trust me, that was by no means any easy process, because I'm sure, like most of you, we did not want to see any of those areas cut, as we are in need of all of them. And most of those areas did provide inmate programming space that we certainly could utilize and would utilize, as we have a very robust reentry program currently at RCCC that we are very proud of. But the difficult decision came down to having to look at the overages and those costs that were out there collectively as a group. We looked at the numerous amounts of things on that list that we would have to cut in comparison to this cook-chill kitchen, which really amounts to more than what those other needs resulted in, what the other assessments resulted in. So that's when we came to the conclusion that that would have to be the one thing that would be cut in order to address the overages for the overall project. And I'll say that we have, I, the sheriff's department has great concerns about any cutting of any programming, because that is the one thing that we scored highest on when it came to the criteria of receiving this award through that competitive process. And so it's something that is not only important to us here in the county, but obviously through the state and the SB 1022 law that allowed us to receive this funding. So, thank you.
Yeah, questions? I had one first. Is there any possibility of additional grant funding that might come along during the construction process?
I don't know if that's necessarily the case through the SB 1022, because I believe we've received the maximum award. Forgive me for that, because I stepped into this position in August of last year, and so I'm still bringing myself up to speed on that. But I do believe that that is true. As far as any other grant funding may be concerned, we're always on the lookout for that.
Okay. Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Jennifer. The information that we received for today's item doesn't differ much from what we had a couple of weeks ago. It's pretty much a summary and reestablishes the recommendation that was before us. I guess what I want to ask about, and some of this may go to general services, but I'm gonna ask you, at least initially, is that yesterday, when we had the CIP program, we've got $2.1 million identified roughly, give or take, just for kitchen. And I understand if you move away from cook-chill, but as I said two weeks ago, and I'll be a bit repetitive here, when one of your colleagues now retired stood before us a year ago July and made the case about literally falling apart the kitchen facilities, and that we had $2 million of immediate needs, and of course, we talked about cook-chill as part of this grant. And the other comment that was made was that, you know, there might be, based upon some meeting that had happened just prior to the board presentation last July, that there might be $12 million that was going to be necessary immediately if we didn't, you know, make some repairs. I guess my question is, though, is that in the event we move away from cook-chill, and we're gonna have a facility, kitchen facility, that provides food for the inmates and those that are incarcerated, RCCC, and that's gonna be the primary extent of it, I guess my question is, is that what, from standpoint of sheriff's department, architectural services, general services, and not just the CIP, but looking at, we're looking at mobilizing a contractor on the order of magnitude of $100 million here, working in a locked facility, costs go up because of that, folks don't necessarily want to work in that environment, we have additive costs for security, both sheriff's security, as well as obviously check-in and checkout for all the folks that are on site. What I haven't seen, certainly in the last two weeks, is what sort of thought process has been applied that while we have a contractor on board, and I know Jeff spoke to us yesterday about the CIP, why wouldn't we make those necessary repairs? We're gonna live with that kitchen facility that was built in 1991, and that would, the case was made before this board, and as I said, I was persuaded that we needed to do that. You've gone through, it wasn't your preference to cut this. I guess, I didn't see anything in this report, either from the sheriff or from general services, that told me, aside from what Jeff spoke to yesterday about maybe, you know, modifying the cook-chill approach, that really told me, as a member of this board, who's gonna vote on this today, and obviously there are other things that are pending, what's gonna be done if we're gonna live with that existing facility that's inadequate? The case has been made, we heard in another context yesterday, why, nobody's told me what we're gonna do. And it was thinking there'd be some economies and efficiencies as a part of this grant, either marrying up other monies that's available to the sheriff's department and/or to others to upgrade the kitchen facility if we're gonna live with that facility that's now approaching 30 years in age. So I guess that's my, you know, the statement was also a question, Jennifer. So what thought process has gone into? If it was that bad a shape, and it's critical, three meals a day for all those inmates, there's nothing to report that tells me what's gonna happen.
So I cannot answer to the repairs. I believe that's something that Mr. Gasaway will have to answer to. I've been with this organization for 20-plus years, and I've worked, I've worked the facility several times throughout my career. That kitchen, my understanding, has always been a temporary kitchen, and, as you've stated. And I can say that I do know from personal experience, and of course, working now in the capacity that I do, that many repairs do need to be made. The equipment is old, you know, it breaks down, it has to be repaired. With regard to the other issues that are going on right now, I don't know quite how to answer your question fully, supervisor, other than we have a dilapidated kitchen that does need repair, and it's going to cost several million dollars in which to do that. The preference would be, obviously, to go cook-chill. But sadly, because of the overages, we just don't have any other options, and there is no good option.
Well, and I'm fine if you walk away.
Maybe Mr. Gasaway can explain this. She wasn't here.
Right.
In the position, and maybe he could.
And he could, and maybe, but I just say, I'm fine if you walk away from the cook-chill approach. Again, that was one of those things that was outlined, and you know, I think there was some, you know, hopes about what that might do relative to other county facilities and meals. But my point is, is that rather than just put money into what was a temporary facility, that why wouldn't folks reconfigure, again, recognizing that, you know, you're trying to save 13 million by cutting out the cook-chill, is to look at reconfiguring within the context of this grant and other monies that might be available, to actually do a facility, whether it was a replacement facility, or major upgrades to what was a temporary facility, as I said, now 30 years in age. And again, I appreciate, Chair, you know, Jeff can certainly answer those questions, but that's the type of thinking, I didn't see that embodied in anything that was in this report. And so this is what's given to the public, this was given to us to consider, and that's why I'm asking the questions, because again, we're gonna make some decisions here today that will spend those dollars, and I'm not convinced that we're doing enough as it relates to the kitchen.
So I'll ask Mr. Gasaway to speak to that. And I will say that I think with the rising cost of the construction, I think all of us were caught off guard. I think we were moving ahead and trying to push this project forward, to get this thing done, and unbeknownst to us, with the disasters and catastrophes around the nation, we find ourselves in this predicament, and not a pleasant one by any stretch. Myself, along with everybody else here today, would love nothing more than to have that cook-chill kitchen go forward, along with everything else that was incorporated into this overall program. So I'll ask Mr. Gasaway to answer those questions, and of course, I'm here too. Thank you for the time.
Good morning. Jeff Gasaway, General Services. So do you want to start with the budget or the CIP items?
I think he wants to have an explanation of why the kitchen was emphasized so much last year, and now it's been taken off the list. I understand the previous conversation.
Yeah. You know, I'm not really sure, I didn't emphasize the kitchen last year, so I can't speak for Chief Torgerson at the time, but right now, this is what we know today as far as the projects we have outstanding in the kitchen. I have copies, if you guys would like a copy as well.
Yeah. I can't read it from here.
Yeah, that's why I...
If you'd be helpful. Is there anybody on the general services staff that can explain this? If you can't, you know what?
As far as the condition of the kitchen, or the thought process for removing the kitchen?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I think, I think the case that was made to us was that the kitchen was falling apart, and the shifts that were there, they had to start the kitchen operations pretty early in the morning, and started at 10:00. They were looking at a way to, and then EMD was also looking at it on some of the sanitary problems with it. So last summer, that's the case that the chief made, was that to bring it up to standard, that was the recommendation on it. And I believe that's what he believed, and that's why he pushed for it. And what we had asked repeatedly was that, I think that's what Supervisor Natoli, you were asking, is we had asked at that point, and we had continued the item till July, is that can we lower the cost in any way? And I believe that that option was not presented to you, and I think hindsight being 2020, we should have pushed that a little bit more. But I think that's what Chief Torgerson believed, and I'm not trying to blame him.
Yeah, and he was convinced, I was persuaded.
It's all of us, now that's coming up, that we want to decrease, we're looking at eliminating the kitchen, and those questions had come up, and I think we should have done a better job saying that you could have eliminated the kitchen, but then the counter that we were getting was, it's an antiquated facility, all the time it takes, it's not efficient, you had EMD. Those were the cases lining up.
Right.
To keep it in versus reducing. And I think what I'm hearing from Jeff and from Jennifer is that as they looked at it, what was the highest value, if you will, without cutting into their programs, what could be removed from it? I believe that's the recommendation that's come forward now, and that the kitchen is the one that can be removed. The other issue with the kitchen is that the whole, how do you say it?
Cook-chill.
The cook-chill concept is something that has been around for years. I think that was something that we should have vetted a little bit more. We did not learn that lesson. But down the road, we're gonna have to do something with this kitchen.
Absolutely.
There's no question about it. And I think that's the issue that I believe, as we have discussed, that we're all grappling with, is that if it comes out at this point, and a year, two years from now, there's things we're gonna have to do with the kitchen. I'm not necessarily saying we do the cook-chill component.
Right. I'm fine if you want to walk away from cook-chill, but you've got $5 million just in keeping an old facility running.
Yeah, we need to do something about it. And that's a discussion that sheriff, general services need to engage and come up with the CIP, what that looks like.
Is that pretty accurate, then, Jeff?
So then, Mr. Gill, I've been out to RCCC a couple times. I just want to make sure that the way you're describing this is something that may need to be, will need to be done in the future, that it is, this new construction doesn't make it more difficult, and therefore more expensive, in the future to upgrade the kitchen?
I'm gonna look at Jeff. The current construction does not make it more difficult to upgrade the kitchen, or the proposed construction we have going on. As far as construction costs, we can't really speak for construction costs.
Well, I understand we can't, my point is, you're not gonna build something in this, because I don't have the drawings in front of me or anything.
And then we have to tear it down to put a new kitchen in. I think that's the point, right? That we're not, the footprint's not getting encroaching on what we might need to do for the kitchen.
No, not at all. We'll have plenty of space to add a kitchen.
We've been through this with, you know, I remember out at the airport and the hotel, and, you know, the way things laid out in the construction drawings, it negated the ability to build the hotel the way we wanted. And I just want to make sure that we aren't doing something today that would stop us from sometime in the future, building a new facility, if we can afford it.
No, not at all. It will not stop us from building a new facility into the future.
If I could, and I know Jeff was gonna respond to the question, but I guess, to what I said to Jennifer earlier, then, in rethinking this, again, you know, and if you need polished direction around backing off a cook-chill, fine. I mean, that's, you know, I'm willing to give that to you today if that was before us. But I guess what I want to know is that going into this, that since you're gonna mobilize a contractor, and you're gonna put it, pay for contingencies, you're gonna pay for all the things that go into this, rather than taking these piecemeal projects a little bit at a time, and I'm not saying that's, you know, that's what the CIP shows right now, and you're gonna give us an update.
Right.
Would there be some economies of scale, I trust there would be, recognizing escalating costs and so forth, if you're gonna live with a temporary facility for the next five years, because we're not gonna have the money to replace it, but you can, some of these things are health and safety, if I read them correctly from their summaries, would we not be smart to try to find, either within fixed asset fund and/or with some other source as a part of this contract, to make at least modifications that we're going to trust we're gonna make anyway? And then we're gonna go out to separate bids, separate contracts, you pay for all that overhead, you pay for the separate design, the things that go into that. Why wouldn't we try to bundle that and kind of, that's what I was, I was hoping somebody would bring today, some kind of reconfiguration, maybe redirection. Again, you don't have the authority to authorize the money, but that was, and I mentioned this, Mr. Gill, before the meeting this morning, is that, in my thinking about it, that makes sense. Now, whether we can find the money or not, I guess that's part of the question that'll be before us, but...
Right.
So tell me, Jeff, would that make sense to do that? Has anybody looked at that? Kind of the engineering it downwards, if we're gonna stick with this old facility and make it safer and better, why, again, backing off the cook-chill, why wouldn't we try to do that? Otherwise, we're gonna pay more in the end, I believe.
Right. I think with the funding we have for this project, it would be difficult to bundle it with this contractor. We are looking at other options with some other things that are happening out at RCCC as bundling projects within the next, I'm gonna say, two fiscal years, and looking at what's going on in the kitchen, and bundling all that together with one contractor for that economy of scale you're talking about. So yes, we are looking at that, but I don't want to cloud the contractor building the SB 1022 project with the modifications that would need to happen in the kitchen, or the upgrades that need to happen in the kitchen. That would be handled under a different contract with some other projects together.
Well, help me understand, beyond what you just described, though, why, if you're gonna have cranes on site, you're gonna have, you know...
Mobilization.
Yeah, mobilization. Basically, you're gonna mobilize, but you have all that security built in for clearances and all that, why wouldn't it make sense to...
It's two different areas of RCCC.
But you're all over the site. You're putting new water plants in, you're redoing the entryway to the north side, I mean, you're doing all over the facility.
I understand what you're talking about. Also, I don't think we want to add any more time to the design or other things than we've already added because of the escalation in prices, and we're actually looking at going out to bid probably in November timeframe, or coming to the board to, for the approval to go out to bid in November, and start construction after the first of the year. So we don't want to slow that down any. And there's some, those other things that need to happen within the kitchen, we're not ready to do yet, and we don't want to slow this project down. This is gonna take a little more time. I mean, there's already a change from, on Project 105, that budget increased significantly because of some other things that needed to happen, electrical needed to move, and some other things from the proposed CIP that...
We adopted yesterday.
Yeah, you talked about yesterday. I mean, that dollar amount went up, and that, I'll update the CIP in a few months. You'll see a board item updating the CIP with a few changes, and that will be reflected in that. So we're not really ready to include some of these items in the SB 1022 with that bid, to answer your question, Supervisor Natoli.
That one, one item almost tripled in price.
Yeah.
Did you just point it out?
Speaking of that, you said something about going out to bid in December or January, which is obviously six months away, and in the last year, the prices have gone up so much, why is it taking us another six months to get prepared to go out to bid, out to bid when this has been in the works for some time?
Well, we had this board, we've had this board item to reduce the scope, and then we still need to get BSCC approval and the state's approval to reduce the scope as well. We needed this action to be approved and have that to take to the BSCC meeting to get it approved.
That takes six to seven months.
On the state's end. Well, the state's meeting today, yeah, come on up, Chris. Chris Bryson with Architectural Services is gonna answer that question.
So the process after we approve here, we have to go to the state, Board of Corrections first, and then we go to the State Public Works Board, and then we go back to DOF. You can see the complexity of their approval system, to be approved to go to bid, and then we would actually go to bid. And then in that timeframe, we would come back to our board here to ask to go to bid. So that takes approval processes and lengths of time. Yeah, it would be somewhere in September to November that we would be out to bid, as long as the state doesn't delay us in any more changes in their process of approval.
Anyone else?
If I may, Mr. Natoli, speak to the funding. Your point is well taken. It does make sense to bring everything together and do it under one contract. However, if this, the type of funding that this is through the state is not a grant, it's lease bond revenue, so it's very complex. They do not want you to touch anything outside their approved scope that we've already agreed to. So that's why we can't, we can't just throw something in as if it was our own funding. That would make a lot of sense, and it would work, but not with the state funding as it currently stands.
I think his, if I could, I think the point is, this is kind of a surprise to us after the pleading for a new kitchen, and so perhaps it could have been described in the staff report differently, so that we understood the reason for the change.
No, we understand that.
I agree.
So, can we move ahead?
Yeah, just one more point to that. If, I think this... If, I think this, in light of what we've talked about here, and even, actually, we took less than 24 hours ago, that CIP's been updated, and that reflects, obviously, refinement. I guess I would ask that maybe somewhere, and maybe it comes back in the timeframe of when we're going to actually go out to bid on the reduced scope of this project, to have some discussion about what's going to happen with that kitchen, because, and how we're going to approach that, and how we might finance that. And I don't want to get off the budget cycle, but to me, the case has been made, and...
You're absolutely right. We do need to come back in a workshop, talk about the different concepts.
Facilities in general, because this is going to...
What we need to do. No, we'll bring this item back.
So you would do that in fall? Is that something we could have, summer, fall?
Take a more fall.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Need a motion on this item? Do you have a second? Please vote. Unanimous vote. Okay, any...
No further business. You do have a closed session.
Okay. I have a closing memory. I wanted to ask, since we didn't get to it yesterday, were there any comments from the CEO's team?
Yeah, just want to thank the board on the budget. It was a long process, as always, in the last years, but the departments put forward what they heard the board priorities, put forward the proposals, and we want to thank the departments, we want to thank the board for getting this budget through, and looking forward implementing it. We do have some challenges, as you all know, and we're going to start working on, from September, narrowly on what gaps that we have to fill.
Okay. I think all of us are very proud of all the initiatives that the departments put forward and worked with, board requests, and when you look at the list of new initiatives that was in the budget, it was pretty impressive. Thank you for that. Then Mr. Kennedy had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, this is my fourth official budget, five budgets. I've sat in the audience once, and just say that this was the most transparent, easiest to understand, so I want to commend Nav for, and Britt for, you know, putting forward something that is, you know, that the public could actually comprehend, so.
Except for the accounting changes.
Yeah. Yeah. So thank you.
Mr. Nattoli?
Yeah, I would just, given those comments, and I want to certainly thank our staff, and thank our chair. Again, it's never easy running a budget hearing, this may have been a little less trying, at least from the standpoint of...
I compare everything to 2009.
That's right. So you got frame of reference like that, it all looks good, so, but I do think that the document, as large as it is, is understandable, and I think that we continue to refine that, but I want to thank our folks for their good work, and certainly, Nav, you, Britt, Nancy, and all the department has, Bruce, I know, and many others that were here today, and all that have contributed to it, and it reflects, you know, $4.2 billion of expenditures, and, you know, 12,000-plus people carrying out services and programs for people in this county. So again, thanks to you, and to the chair, and to my colleagues. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I want to thank all the staff for all their hard work on the budget, but also, I wanted to make a comment regarding the updates, the regular updates that we've been getting. We did a lot of initiatives my first year on the budget, and, you know, the homeless initiatives and economic development, and we're getting regular reports that are kind of giving us an idea of what the progress is, and how we stack up, how each district stacks up, and that's really helpful for me, to kind of get an idea of how my district is doing, and how we're doing with the homeless initiatives, and what can I share with my constituents, and I just wanted you guys to know that I really appreciate those updates, because they're, it's like we are making some amazing progress on some of our goals, and it's meaningful. So thanks to all the county staff for everything that they do to help us better represent and get these things done.
Thank you. So I'm sorry that I can be the only one not to thank everyone, but I'll take a little different spin, and I certainly want to thank our executive team. As you do each year, you, you know, it's probably the most trying, time-intensive, sometimes nerve-wracking exercise that you probably go through each year to put in front of five individuals with very different perspectives on different subject matter, and perhaps even governance as a whole, to try and, you know, achieve consensus, and that's not always possible. And sometimes, you know, split votes or healthy disagreements make for a better product ultimately, and I like to think that in some instances, some aspects of the 1819 budget continue to reflect that process. I also want to take the time, though, to thank all the men and women of this organization. We continue to be the second-largest employer in the county of Sacramento, second only to the state of California, and that shouldn't be lost on us as elected leaders or our executive team, that we not only have a purpose to serve the public, but we also have a very obvious purpose, at least in my estimation, to be fair in our labor contracts and our labor negotiations. There's a lot of people, we see them almost every meeting here, that have worked three, four decades, they make their careers here, they perform under not always hospitable circumstances, and I don't think they get thanked enough, especially in the context of something as, that can be mundane as a budget, but I'd like to thank all of our hard-working men and women of Sacramento County.
Okay. We do have a, Supervisor Frost wants to close in memory, any further comments before then? Okay?
This afternoon, I'd like to close in memory of two individuals who are special. First, Edna Joy Mitchell, age 76, a resident of Alberta, California, entered into arrest May 11, 2018, surrounded by her husband, daughter, granddaughter, and chaplain. She was preceded in passing by her mother, Dorothy Della Lockhart, stepfather, Walter D. Lockhart Jr., paternal father, John R. Pow, and sister, Shirley Enlow. Born Edna Joy Pow on July 24, 1941, in Shaomish, Washington, to Dorothy and John, Edna's family moved to Rio Linda area when she was 13 years old. She attended and graduated from Rio Linda Junior High, and attended Grant Union High School, Highlands High School, and graduated from San Juan High School, class of 61, my alma mater. She enjoyed attending Highlands High School class reunions with her husband and former classmates. Edna is survived by her husband, Roger L. Mitchell, son Harold, daughter Joelle, son Joey, brother Dick, sister Patty, five granddaughters, and five great-grandchildren. Edna was a wonderful lady and the matriarch of the family. She was an excellent seamstress who made clothes and costumes for her family. She took pleasure in baking as a hobby and side job, wedding cakes, birthday cakes, nothing would compare to a Grammy cake. She was a fireman's wife and an attentive mother and Grammy who loved her family and her community. Services were held at Mount Vernon Memorial Park on May 25, 2018, where family and friends, community leaders, and firefighters paid their respects and said their goodbyes. May God bless Edna's family during this time, and may Edna rest in eternal peace. James Barclay is my secretary's, Tina Barclay's father-in-law, and this afternoon, I want to also close in memory of James. Foothill Farms resident, James Barclay, passed away April 10 of this year. He was born October 1, 1930, in No Show, Missouri, but moved early on and was raised in Orland, California, on his family's dairy farm. When the Korean War broke out, he wasn't old enough to enlist, so he lied about his age so that he could, so that he could, and he went off to fight. He attained the rank of Staff Sergeant and received a Purple Heart during his time in Korea. Upon returning to Sacramento area, he became an ironworker. He married his wife of 62 years, Mary, and they moved to Foothill Farms and raised three boys who attended St. John the Evangelist Catholic School in Carmichael and Jesuit High School. After retiring, he continued to help in the community at his church, and through work with the local Elks Club with things such as the annual 4th of July Parade and various fundraising events. He was still active, helping on the sidelines of Jesuit football games, even after his boys had graduated. He and his wife, Mary, loved the ocean and spent free time staying at various coastal sites, with Hawaii being his favorite. He was an avid 49er fan, taking the family and attending games, first to Kesar Stadium and then Candlestick Park. He was a great man and will be missed. God bless James Barclay and his family. May he rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will close today in memory of Edna J. Mitchell and James Barclay. We're adjourned. Oh, sorry, we have a closed session. And then we're adjourned.